She's asking you.
I'm ready.
You're up.
You're up.
Good morning. Welcome to our November fifteenth board meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay, will you pray for us?
Let's open the prayer. Father, thank you for the day you've given us today. Thank you for the beauty of it. Thank you for the rain. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you have provided to our county abundantly. Thank you for these men who serve willingly, Father, who have done everything that they can in the best interest of the county and for all the citizens of the county. Thank you for our men and women of law enforcement that protect us every day. Father, we have so many things to be thankful for. As we enter this season of Thanksgiving, I pray, Father, that we will never take for granted how you have blessed us so abundantly. Now, give us wisdom and discernment that we need to make good and wise decisions in Christ's name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. Looks like we got a big crowd, so we'll just get this ball rolling. Under public comments and recognition, we have risk management partners. Can y'all come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We got the public official's liability and the worker's compensation we'll go over this morning. And the good news is, is it all went relatively smooth, so it shouldn't be a lot of questions. If it is, let us know, we'll address them, won't we?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
So, guys, we had a renewal with AIG that came up. And they were requesting that we raise our retention to a hundred thousand dollars from fifty. So, we were in the marketplace and Richmond Insurance Company gave us three options. Fifty thousand dollar retention, seventy-five thousand dollar retention, and a hundred thousand dollar retention. And you can see the premium charges shaded in orange, so you can see what the difference is in the actual premium. Our annual budget expenditures are forecasted to be a little bit higher than they were last year. That plays into the pricing. But, you know, AIG is out, in my opinion. I think we ought to consider either option B, C, or D. We gotta put C on there, but we haven't really had a lot of claims in this area for public officials' liability. And all the ones that we have had have all been settled within the retention.
I haven't had one, have I?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. In fact, there is a, the next page over, you'll see the claims experience. We haven't had a claim in five years. We've got one right now for a dog that was erroneously killed by the animal control. But other than that, we haven't had anything. I would consider...
Paul, the retention, is that like our deductible?
Yes, yes.
I wanna be clear.
Yes. So, I mean, we got three options there. Anywhere from fifty thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars for a fifty thousand dollar deductible to thirty-eight thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollar deductible. And the expiring price was forty-two thousand dollars. So, I mean, I would consider possibly going to, you know, the higher retentions, since we've always handled these claims within the retention. So, that's my opinion. I mean, it's hard to forecast what's gonna happen in the future.
Yeah.
But we've got three options there. And like I said, the AIG option is just there for information purposes, 'cause I don't really think it's a good option.
All right.
Sound good?
Yeah.
This is what we see across the board for our coverage, is that our responsibility under self-insure retention is being increased and increased and increased in order to keep the premium cost as low as possible. So, we're happy to carry more of the risk regardless. I don't know why there should be any difference.
Y'all, y'all are professionals and you like C.
I like it. I think, I think it's, it's obviously within the realm of what we do and within the realm of what you guys experience is. So, I think it's fine. Myself.
Make a motion on that?
Do we?
Yeah, so I think maybe is it under a key section?
Okay.
We need to make sure.
And this policy comes up on December the first, so this is one we need to go ahead and make a decision.
Mr. President, my suggestion would be to get a motion to add this item to the agenda. I don't see it on here, so let's add it.
All right.
As a separate option, C, for public official liability.
Do I have...
I'm making a motion to add.
I have a motion by Calhoun to add this public officials' liability insurance discussion to the agenda. Daniel Cross seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor of adding? Motion passes, it's added.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Calhoun makes a motion to approve this added insurance discussion and selection to the agenda. And Daniel Cross seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? And we did select C. That was our selection.
The first C.
The first C, seventy-five thousand dollar retention.
Yep.
That's, that would be my opinion.
Thank y'all.
Second part is the worker's compensation.
Thank you, sir.
This coverage actually comes up on one-one. And it's with the Mississippi Public Entity Self-Insured Trust again. These, your worker's compensation has certain class codes that normal insurance companies don't find attractive, like the police, street roads, some fire exposure.
And we have shopped it and we have moved it in the past. However, there's nobody right now actively wanting to compete. And a lot of the reasons is due to the outstanding pricing you have. It's with Mississippi Public Entity Fund, which is doing very well, is strong financially. If y'all will turn to this page, it's written in, Louis, it's got some things on it you might find pretty interesting. Payrolls is up one point, one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand from last year. Worker's compensation is based off of payroll. So, with that being said, your premium is actually down from last year.
Even though your payroll estimate is up.
The premium is down, meaning your rates are lower. So, Mississippi Public Entity really has stepped up and kept you guys, 'cause even in the year twenty-two, the losses was not favorable for Rankin County. Another thing is here at the bottom, you'll see the premium of the four twenty-nine oh eighty-three versus four seventy-seven twenty-seven, that was in two thousand and four. That's when Paul and I started helping Rankin County.
And your payroll was twelve million.
Yeah, payroll was twelve million. And another thing, it was with Mississippi Public Entity Fund at that time, so. And the very next page is just really a comparison showing the different rates and the payrolls. And you can see the actual total premium. We did get another quote just for comparing purposes and showed that this was the closest only other quote we had. And it's considerably higher.
Yeah, and that's with the signed risk pool. If we had to go to the signed risk pool, but we don't. Like I said, Mississippi Public Entity likes your account, they wanna keep your account. And so, they stepped up this year and lowered their rates. And they're doing a good job. And I've looked at their financials just to make sure, because they're not, they're not reviewed by a standard insurance financial review company. So, we request their financial statement every year to review it and make sure they've got good financials in place, and they do. And we also called the Workers Comp Commission just to make sure they're in good standing with those guys, and they are. So, we feel pretty confident with these guys.
Being this is up in one-one, do we need to do it today?
Let's go ahead, I mean, I think we should.
Yeah, I would. I'll make a motion to add this to the...
This is not on our agenda before. Okay, all right. Calhoun makes a motion to add our... Workers Comp, Risk Management portion of our insurance program to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Daniel seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of adding it? Aye. All right. Has been added to the agenda now.
Motion approved.
Calhoun makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, both of you.
We appreciate y'all. Thank y'all for working.
Thank y'all for what you've done over the years and today. All right. Do we have any other public comments that's not on our agenda later on in our meeting? Has, let's see here. Tell you what, I'm just gonna read. If you're not covered later, well, then now is the time to come up and make your public comment. Eli Fisher?
Yep, that's I-Roe, that's our right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, okay. All right. Here's three people to speak about PRV, we're covering that later.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Thank you for coming, Tammy. And others? Kerry Gibson? Yes, sir?
Why are you calling my name?
You signed in, or somebody signed your name in.
Yeah, I just wanted to watch.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that's, that's all on my list, so we will go on to Tim. Nope, old business.
I'll make a motion to approve old business.
Calhoun makes a motion to approve the old business. Daniel seconds that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Jay Bishop makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Now's the time for discussion. I do, I've got a question that I just, not clear, I read over, not while I was driving, but en route here. And I saw where we, very small amount of money, or maybe buying an ad or something for Southwest Mississippi Livestock Show or something. Looked like a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar, and that's why I thought it was probably an ad.
Through the extension, it's through the extension, Travis.
Where is Southwest Livestock Association? I mean, would that cover us?
I checked, it came through Doug's office.
Okay, it was just a question because I saw the southwest. All right. We had a motion by Jay and a second by Calhoun. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Porper, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item we have on the agenda is Osprey Point at Arbor Landing. That was formerly known as Osprey Cove. That's how it was approved in the preliminary plat and the construction drawings. We recommend an approval of that final plat and the letter of credit in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. That's a PRV development.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Daniel makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item B, Mr. President, is Program Element one point two-three, Bank Stabilization at White Road. That's an ARPA project. We recommend an approval of payout number one from S&amp;S Excavation LLC in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents and authority to issue the check.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Jay Bishop makes a motion. I'll have a second.
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? I have a question. I just don't know what we're doing on White Road. I know we reworked that road a year or two ago, but this must be banks or something.
This is some ditch, it's curved, there was some considerable sloughing of the banks and all. And State Aid had noted it several times on our State Aid ride, 'cause White Road's a State Aid road.
Yeah.
And so, we're using some ARPA money to stabilize that ditch in the bank.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the same job. We recommend an approval of contract change order number one in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. With that, as far as we had a driveway, a large driveway covert that was damaged right there at the end of the ditch project, and it needs to be replaced. We recommend a replacement of that under that change order.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Calhoun makes a motion.
Second.
Jay Bishop seconds the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item D, Mr. President, is Program Element two point oh-five. That's also an ARPA project, Mill Creek Bank Stabilization. We recommend an approval of payout number four from Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services in the amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents and authority to issue the check.
So, I'll make a motion to approve, and I wanna comment on these guys. This is the first time during my eight years that we've used them, and they were fantastic. And then for the same side of that, your people on the ground, Tim, were incredible. They stayed on top of everything, they organized. I've had tons of disaster projects over the last eight years. We had some contractors come in and just toyed with us to death, you know? These guys were fantastic, and I just wanna commend them and you guys for getting this project done in a timely fashion. Bishop, your project's never gonna happen.
Yeah, you're right.
But this one happened.
Just rubbing it in, man.
I'm just preaching the truth, bud. I'm pulling for you, I'm pulling for you.
Hopefully, we can get these permits and...
They ain't coming. That's where the project's gonna die, the core engineers. They go to the core engineers where they go to die. So, that's what, you did fantastic on this team, and I appreciate it.
The contractor did too, I'll echo that, that we, they really were, they worked with everybody well.
Did y'all get the dead trees down?
They're in the process of doing that.
All right. What Daniel was talking about, or mentioning, the permit process is not through this office or you, or it's a core engineer process that takes...
A lot of our other projects are going through.
Takes a long, long time. But anyhow, we have it and I have not got, you made a motion. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion. Calhoun seconds to approve this payment. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Well, we still came in under budget on that one.
So, they had a little louder end of the microphone.
Yep.
We did come in under budget on that one.
Probably almost two million.
Would be nice if they could get two million put toward roads.
We're just gonna put it towards Jay Bishop. My vote's to put all that two million towards Jay Bishop, 'cause his project's not gonna happen either. You know what I'm saying? So, he's gonna have that two million plus whatever he's got set up over there. 'Cause next, in four, three, three and a half years, Bishop's gonna be running again. And he'll be able to use it, hey, I think this project's gonna happen.
I can put it on my push charts.
Put that in the paper, will you?
Please.
Bishop's project's gonna happen in three and a half years.
Let the record reflect that I'm laughing, but it's nervous laughter, okay? It's nervous laughter. Makes me very nervous. Under my section, Mr. President, items A, B, and C, if I can get a motion to set public hearings for November thirty at nine AM for item A, B, and C, I would appreciate that.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
Bishop makes a motion to set these A, B, and C till November thirtieth?
Yes, sir.
Calhoun, excuse me, Daniel Cross seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, Mr. President, is a setting on December the fourth at nine AM. This is media display, trailhead media sign variance request. So, I'd ask that that, that item D be set for public hearing on December fourth.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Calhoun makes a motion. I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor of setting this on December the fourth?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Items E and F can be taken together, Mr. President, setting public hearings December the fifteenth at nine AM.
We'll make a motion.
Second.
All right. Calhoun makes a motion. Jay Bishop seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item G, Mr. President, is a request to the board for authority for the board president to execute interlocal agreements between Rankin County and the cities of Pearl and city of Brandon with respect to the I-20 Connector Loop project, which is our major transportation initiative over the last couple of years. Each of the cities has already executed and agreed and has affixed their governing authorities' signatures to the documents already. The meetings with the respective cities went very well, and the cities have agreed that they will participate, splitting the cost with the county. Splitting the cost with the county for all expenses associated with construction, planning, pre-construction, environmental, right-of-way acquisition, everything associated with the project. They're, they are in for half to the extent that there is not sufficient federal or state funding to take care of those costs. So, that's the, that's the way that the agreements are structured. I need authority for the board president to execute so that we can get them on now to the AG's office for final approval and execution and filing, and then we'll be done with that.
So, I talked to the mayor of Pearl, he asked you to add something in there. Did we do that? There was something about, I don't remember, the property that was gonna be along I-20, I don't remember exactly what it was that he wanted.
That front and drug?
Yeah, he's talking, you're talking about the connector load, the connector load, road, the, that's currently, that's just shown as conceptual.
I'm not sure.
It's the, it's the airport connector.
All right. Okay, so now I don't remember what it is, guess we'll move forward.
So, that would not need to be in the interlocal itself, Jay, since it's already a part of the project and it's part of the city of Pearl's interlocal, not affiliated with the city of Brandon. If we need to tweak the language, we can do that, but I don't think that it's necessary that it be in the interlocal.
All right, okay.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Calhoun makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right. Item H, Mr. President, is a discussion of statewide burn ban that was issued by Governor Reeves. As you guys know, the governor lifted the partial burn ban. I'm gonna hand you guys the release document that the governor's office put out for consumption. The lifting of the burn ban is effective tomorrow or at twelve oh one midnight, midnight and one second tonight. The governor's statewide burn ban is lifted. There are, there is a listing of counties that remain under a countywide burn ban. You guys enacted a countywide burn ban, but you set a termination date on it. It was only effective for thirty days. And then the governor's statewide came into place, and we didn't renew the county burn ban. So, there's no action necessary for you guys. Just wanted to update you about that. So, as far as Rankin County is concerned, the restricted burning activity will no longer be restricted effective midnight.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I wanna make sure you guys were aware of that, and there's no action for you to take on that.
Hey, will you send that out to our fire departments, Slay? And just let them know, just be sure every one of them knows that it is lifted.
We'll do that. I'll make myself a note here. Thank you for pointing that out. Next item under my section.
Really, I'd like to thank our ELC for the responses that they have made over the last three months. Phenomenal, is all I can say. Thank y'all.
Item I, under my section, is a brief presentation of draft comprehensive plan documents by CNPD. Let me address with you guys, Dave Wade is coming, I think Ms. Gray's gonna come. I think she is, there she is. She's running the hardware. So, they're gonna do, do a brief presentation of comp plan. Let me tell you guys that we have an exceptional relationship with CNPD, and they help us immensely with our planning activities, especially as it relates to zoning and planning considerations. And I just wanna express publicly how much I appreciate having a good working relationship with these guys and how careful they are to take good care of us. The work product speaks for itself. Each of you guys has in front of you a, I think it's bound, version of our draft comprehensive plan. This is something, well, it's, it's more than draft. I think we're in a position that if you guys are happy and satisfied with what you see after the presentation, we'll be in a position to move forward on your comp plan. As you guys know, comp plan is a planning document. It's, it's not law. It doesn't enact policy. What it does is it sets a guide for planning purposes, and it is the underlying foundation and basis upon which your regulations for land use are based. And so, our zoning ordinance will follow or should follow what you see in this comprehensive plan. We are not prepared, fully prepared, to roll out for your consideration the zoning amendments that we will ask the board to consider at an appropriate time. So, this is restricted today to our comprehensive plan. I'll have more to share about that momentarily. But right now, what you're gonna be talking about is your comp plan, your planning document, your guide document. And then later, probably next month, we will begin to address zoning amendments more directly with you. Okay? Dave?
Thank you, Craig. I had the privilege of working with you guys nearly twenty years ago. We adopted the first comprehensive plan, two thousand and four, for the county, and that's when the county rolled out zoning as well. Since that time, we've had two updates, one in twenty-ten and twenty-seventeen, and this is your latest comprehensive plan update. I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights, everybody has a copy. Some of the highlights are that, based on the twenty-twenty census, which we feel like was a gross undercount, I think we saw that statewide because of the way the census was conducted. It was quite an undercount. We feel like we certainly had more than a hundred and fifty-seven thousand people residing in Rankin County. But even with the undercount, the county stayed the fourth-largest county in the state. It also had the sixth-highest growth rate from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. One of the things that we noted in the plan is the percentage of the unincorporated population of the county remains at fifty-two percent. And that's important because we do have a high percentage of unincorporated population that live in heavily populated areas such as the reservoir and some of the areas around the cities. That percentage of population has remained at over fifty percent for the past twenty years. I think it used to be about fifty-six percent. Some of that change is probably due to annexations of our cities and that sort of thing. We did look at and analyze the building permit data. We have over here twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen residential building permits and then twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-three. And as you can see, the residential permits are spreading out into the rural areas. And doing that analysis, you'll notice in your plan, we point out that over sixty percent of the residential building permits between that twenty-sixteen and twenty-twenty-three were in districts three and four. So, I think that points to a need that we stay with our planning program and really work with you on the zoning to ensure that we're not attributing to further drainage issues and problems that may arise. We want, we want, we want growth, but we want it done correctly, of course. Public facilities, honestly, this was an easy part of the plan to work on because the county has continually kept up with that. It's not like a lot of communities that have failing infrastructure. The county has, has, just since the last plan built the West Rankin wastewater plant, the new Chancery Court Building, the new road department. So, I would commend the county officials on keeping up with the growth and planning for facilities. The transportation plan element, we work, as you know, we're the MPO. Some of you sit on the MPO board, so we work closely with Federal Highway and MDOT. We did update the transportation plan just to ensure all of our planning efforts, roadwise, bike, pedestrian, and so on, are well-coordinated, as well as with PRV. We have some of the PRV folks here. We try to coordinate the bike and pedestrian planning as well. The land use plan, you're not gonna see drastic changes in your, your land use plan map because the land use plan is updated periodically as we... map because the land use plan is updated periodically as we meet with you guys, you know, several times a year and work on zoning amendments and that sort of thing. It's, it's continually updated. Really, from here, the next steps is to set a public hearing for consideration of adoption of the comprehensive plan, and then, as Craig pointed out, we'll be working with you on some zoning amendments or proposed that address some, some new things.
So we not need to get that done before we have a public hearing?
So the, the way I would like to consider doing this, Jay, if the board's okay, is... Let's have Dave Gray come back and share with you guys the specific zoning amendments that are under consideration. Once we get those fine tuned and we have them like we think we want them, and then roll those out. And at that time, I'd like to set a public hearing for both the comp plan and the zoning amendments at the same time, so we have one and not two, if that's okay with the board. So I would anticipate maybe we'll be setting a public hearing for both at either December four or December fifteen, depending on how the calendar falls for us. And then your public hearing will probably be one of the, one of the meetings in, in early January.
Do you have the short-term rental plan in place?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we're addressing that and the proposed zoning amendments as well as some other things. I think we have about four pages of proposed amendments so far.
This right here, is this future? Is this already pre, is this future growth on transportation?
Is that the transportation? Yes. Yes.
Is this like plans for the MPO?
It is. It's, like I say, we coordinate everything since we are the MPO. Everything's coordinated with Federal Highway and, as well as local planning efforts.
There are some additional things that isn't on MPO. So I hope your plan will be the end yet.
I just see on here we have four lane in Grants Ferry Road from twenty-five, four seventy-one.
Grants Ferry shouldn't run, didn't run that well, I don't think.
Well, I guess you're talking about the back road.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that's that widening project. But I think that was a, Harrison making speak on that. I wonder where he's at, or Young Timmy.
That was one of the things, I know we talked about submitting for one of those MPO products, I believe. That's going to actually split District Two and Four gains. Run in the backside of it?
Yep.
Touch is five, too? Yeah, right there on River Bend.
Is this all stuff starting on the step that's on this?
I would have to, I'd have to get Leslie to check on that. I couldn't answer it off loud, but I can, I can get Miss Calendar and get you an answer on that.
I think that part gets three areas.
Yeah, I agree. Because it's got some other stuff on here, like six lane and Crossgate Boulevard. Wow. Yeah, that would be crazy, I think, since we're just now doing work on it.
Isn't that what it's going to be?
I don't know.
I think it's going to be six lanes.
Is that wide enough for three on each side?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't remember just because it's all coned off right now, huh?
It's, it's, it looked to me like two lanes and a turn lane on each side.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking maybe it's a jogger trail or bicycle. I don't know what it is. It's coned off, so I can't.
Yeah, it's not paved yet. So I guess, I guess we'll find out.
Yeah. All right, we'll discuss it later.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Gray.
I've got a couple of items in executive session, gentlemen.
All right. Let me say this. Craig?
Yes, sir.
Do you expect to have an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we go through, and then when we get to executive session, can you, after we have let everybody go and we've covered the business, can you make that executive session go for probably an additional hour to where I can hold everybody here? Because I want them to go to the courthouse when we leave here. The county has some big business up there at one o'clock.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to keep, you know, so...
Saying we're good and make...
Really, we, I just want to put emphasis...
You're asking, you're asking me to extend my time as podium.
I just want to put emphasis that it's important that we be there.
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Take your time, Keith.
Yes, sir. Item A is authority to publish the premium list for the Rankin County livestock shows for twenty twenty-four.
I make motion to approve.
I don't know how you're going to draw that out.
I know, I know. All right, I'm, I've made the motion. Jay Bishop seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
I do have one item for additional business. If the board will bear with me, let me give you a little bit of background. Currently, the county and the sheriff's department contracts with a company called Vital Core for medical needs at the jail. We've discovered recently that through the contract we have with them, they have not billed us the correct amount over the last couple of years. They were due an increase, an annual increase in the cost of the contract, and they continue to bill the original amount monthly. So we'd like to go ahead and rectify that situation, which would require a seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollar, thirty-eight cents payment to catch up on the current contract with Vital Core. So what I'm asking for is the authority to issue a check to Vital Core in that amount.
Where are you, where is the money coming from our...
It comes out of the, the...
Channel fund?
Yes, sir. Well, it, it's coming out of the sheriff's department budget right now.
So you're going to write a check out of their budget to them?
Yes, sir.
I like that idea. All right, do I have a motion? No, we got to add it. Sorry. Is that the only thing you have, Keith?
Yes, sir.
All right. I need a motion to add this to the agenda. Daniel makes motion to add it. That was second.
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? We've added this discussion to additional business. All right, now do I have a motion to approve? All right. Calhoun, excuse me, I'm going to call you Calhoun Cross, makes motion. Now, Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Keith.
Yes, sir. And I do have one executive item in personnel.
I have one additional that would involve a, a road manager. The, and, and this is, I know it's not your ditch. It's a state ditch, but obviously, they're not going to do anything about it. And I would like for you and Craig somehow address it. The drainage ditch that runs along four seventy-one right to the, well, I say the end, but where four seventy-one joins Highway twenty-five across from the barbecue place. From, there is a storage facility, there's a couple of them there, but right in there to twenty-five and probably even on the other side. The other side I have not inspected. There's trees that are twelve foot, fifteen foot tall. This has not been mowed. It hasn't been done anything to. It's grown up. And that is a real flat area that is prone to flood. Those storage buildings, that area has flooded several times. That ditch is not going to drain. I've had some complaints, and I've directed them to MDOT, and this has been going on for over a year. I thought they got the message. There was a long arm on that road clipping the sides of the ditches. When they got there, they didn't do, they clipped their side, I mean, from the ditch to the road and did not go on further back on their right of it. And it's, I'm telling you, there's trees that big around that are now in that ditch, and it's, it's not going to be able to flow when we get a flash type flood. Can y'all do something to get either MDOT pushed along to do that before? We're supposed to have a wet winter. Before we have problems, if not, can you take some kind of action to get us approval? I'm not, I'm talking about three hundred yards, not even that far probably, but it will hold the water right there. Okay?
We're pretty confident that that's MDOT right of way, Steve?
Pretty dang confident.
Okay.
It's at the corner of twenty-five and four seventy-one.
Okay. Yeah, that's clearly going to be, if it's, it's, if it's where you're suggesting it's going to be inside the, the MDOT right of way.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll look at it and try to go through some channels and see if we can get that done or not. We'll, I'll give it Craig and see what we got.
But when that, not only when that water backs up, are they going to flood, but it's going to restrict the flow of water coming from downstream.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to back up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, while you, I got something additional business to be discussed. Stone Bridge, I, I know we, that's the P A subdivision that's being developed right now, and we went in, I don't know, first of the summer or...
Last year.
Or last year and paved some of the roads that money was allocated, and the county accepted the roads in there. We didn't pave two of the roads, and now they're developing those two roads, and they're falling apart, and road departments having to go out and put sixteen in those big, I guess, pumping areas. And I got Mike to go out, and I think Ed Camp went out and gave a surprise on what it's going to cost to lime, and I don't think...
Base.
Ed Camp got the base, but I think AJ's might have the base, and then Ed Camp's got the surface. But what I'd like to do is there's some money left in the bond that we were going to use in District Three and take some of that money and put toward that stone bridge.
We have accepted it, and it is ours.
Yes, sir. It is ours. We're either going to come out of budget or to do this or...
And it's going to be around two hundred thousand dollars is what it's going to cost to lime it and get it paid. I just need to get the base down before it sets in wintertime, same kind of deal.
We may have missed that opportunity. But anyhow.
What's money Brad got in his account? At least two hundred, didn't it?
At least two hundred.
Just at least two hundred, I think.
I didn't, I didn't give mine all away, Jay.
All right. Do we need a motion?
I think we're going to need a motion to over-greave.
Yep, absolutely.
To move that money.
It, it needs to be the board's position that, number one, bond funds, it's eligible for bond proceeds, that'd be first thing. Second thing is that the board is authorizing the, the use of the bond funds for this specific work.
All right.
Do we need to put them out? No more to exceed, no more than...
I, I, I would say not to exceed the extent of the bond funds available.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Calhoun.
I'll make that motion to add this to the agenda.
Calhoun makes motion to add this construction or maintenance, maintenance at Stone Bridge. Daniel seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, it's added.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Calhoun makes motion to approve. Daniel makes motion to second. And any other discussion? All in favor? Most passes.
Thank y'all.
Any other additional business?
I, I got one more thing that I'd just like to talk about briefly and kind of see where we're at and get it. Anyway, in this drought situation, we've, we've got a numerous amount of dead trees on the right of way. When I say large amount, I mean, we've got them scattered from one end of the county, and, I mean, we're talking several hundred trees.
Several thousand, probably.
Yeah, probably thousands when you get to marking them out. I think we can, what I'd like to do is entertain a contractor that would come in and take these trees down, force, and that way he can either, he can take it down with a track hoe or a machine he can, or if he's got to have a bucket truck, but to stay within our right of way of doing this.
And removal.
And removal and cleanup of these trees.
We're not talking about grinding the stump. We're just talking about taking the trees down.
Cutting trees down. There'll be some of them be able to fall back into the timber lines of this area, but there'd be some in, I seen four in the yard the other day that's, that'll have to be removed, but we won't remove the stumps. We will just remove the tree and, and clean, clean up.
You're saying a yard, in a yard that's inside of our right of way?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's just somebody's maintained it all the way up to the roadway.
Right.
But they were four pine trees, and it seems to be mostly pines. I'm seeing some scattered oaks and gums, but it's mostly pine, but the issue is some of them are going to take bucket trucks, some of them are going to take machinery to get them down, and some of this we're going to have to work with our EPAs and energy all to remove because they're within, they're between the fire line and the road right of way. So...
It'd be nice if it was some type of grant or something. I mean, being most of the...
And I mean, I don't know. I don't know if they come out.
This going to require soliciting, I mean, the size of it. You're going to have to bid it. Why don't we get together a solicitation and at the same time, let Mr. Calhoun see if there's going to be or if there's anything in sight for some grant money.
The board would not have to have an RFP to do that.
Yeah.
It can, but it doesn't, it's not required that it do that with the faith of service. So it's really up to the board. How do you...
I, I would, I'd like to solicit.
Why don't we just get quotes?
Yeah, quote, well, solicit it for quotes.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, this is going to be a, it's going to be a hard animal to put together to bid because, I mean...
There's no way that you're going to be able...
I mean, you'd have to identify every tree, and somebody'd have to go look at them, and every tree's going to be a different type scenario with taking down. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know. We, I was thinking of professional service.
How do you expect the, the pricing to come to us? How do they price that out?
You know, I mean, we've been taking some down with some private tree contractors, Craig, and everything's been either running fifteen hundred or thirty-eight hundred, just depending on what kind of...
They just go out, they look at it, they give you a call and say, this is what I think it's going to take.
Well, if they're, if they're doing hundreds in an area, we ought to be able to get a better price than...
Yeah. I agree with that.
And, and we also have many tree services in the county and that are good. I don't want to pick one.
Yeah.
I would, I'd rather, I know that you know the ones y'all would rather work with, things like that, but fairness and to cut down, because this is going to be a sizable contract on that we favored somebody over somebody else. I'd rather you get the top three and then I'm fine with you selecting out of that bunch because you can select out of the top three because you've worked with them, stuff like that. But I do think that...
I'm thinking we're going to need more, one up north.
I would not mind even, I wouldn't mind having it.
We, we've got some ideas.
Okay.
I've structured that.
I'm just trying to get a feel of how y'all want to move with this, so we know how to structure.
I don't think we're going to have issue this winter, but I'm going to say by next winter, you're going to start seeing trees on...
Well, I mean, by spring, I think you're going to have problems, Brad, because, I mean, the barks are already slipping on some of these trees that I seen die a month ago. I mean, the barks are already slipping because when these trees died in the drought, the beetles got in them and sucked everything out of them. So there's no sap or nothing left in these trees. So we'll get something together and get it to y'all, but I just wanted to see what y'all, how y'all want to go, go about it before we do put something together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have any other additional business?
No, sir.
I'm not going to be able to hold on for a moment.
Executive session, Slay?
Yes, sir.
Personnel or what?
For three different reasons to be in. One's potential litigation, the other is property acquisition, the third is a potential economic development.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to go into executive session for those three reasons Slay stated.
All right.[1778.01]